Call me in order, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mike Nichols.
Aye.
Larry Moser. Robert Joe Stevens.
Aye, sir.
Isaac Chavez. Joseph Bookwalter.
Here.
Mark Mills.
Here.
Chris Alaba.
We have five of our seven members here, which is enough to conduct business more than a quorum, but we'll still have to get four yes or four no votes on any motion, so just point that out ahead of time. I think most of us are aware of that. First item is the minutes, which is the, I'm just looking at them here, March 26, 2025, two months ago, and we have the, I think all members were present, so we have enough, the right people here to act on the minutes, so.
I make a motion if it is approved as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and second, can we have a roll call, please, on the minutes?
Mike Nichols.
Aye.
Larry Moser. Robert Joe Stevens.
Aye.
Joseph Bookwalter.
Aye.
Mark Mills.
Yes. Okay, the first item of new business is docket CPC 2025 day 02, City of Frankfurt, it said 1101 and 1103, East Clinton Street, rezone from B residential to C residential. So I'll turn it over to our staff, Mr. Stock.
Thank you, Mr. President, members out here, thanks for coming. Usually we have an empty house, so it's always good to see folks. The owners of this property on Clinton Street, 1101, 1103, are here, they're new owners, and I'm going to give you a little history of why we're doing what it is that we're doing for this property tonight. So, this property was purchased by an out-of-town realtor or a rentor. Ah, this property was purchased by an out-of-town owner, and he came in and redid it all. I don't think the building has looked any better than it has right now. I think it has two or three apartments in the main building, and then it has an accessory structure that has an apartment in it also, and it all got remodeled, and then it went up for sale. And then when it went up for sale, it dawned on me, is this zone multifamily? So I came back to the office, I looked, it was not, it was Zone B residential. So then I looked at the old zoning map, and prior to the Unified Development Ordinance passing and redoing the zoning map, it was C residential, that lot was C residential. And so, we always, we always said that if we came across something that was a C residential in the past, if it was still multifamily dwelling or complex, that we would bring it back before the Plan Commission and ask them to reestablish it back to a C residential to make the lot proper. So, it got sold, and it got sold as a non-conforming use because it was in a B residential district, and it shouldn't have been, but a non-conforming use can be sold as a non-conforming use as long as they don't make it bigger or smaller, and they didn't do that, they just cleaned it all up and made it look a lot nicer. So, the sale is legitimate, but I just don't think that it's proper that we come in and make that change when it was C residential to begin with. I'm asking that you replace it back to C residential so that their property is now in proper format. I think there are people here to talk to you about it also, but that's my request for this property.
Just a couple of clarifying questions. So on the day the new Unified Development Ordinance was adopted, what was the use? Was it a single family, or was it a?
It was Zone C residential multifamily.
It was used, actually had a multifamily.
It did, everything was in place. Maybe the accessory structure in the back was not in place at that time, but the house itself, I think, had three apartments in it, and it was all used, they were all filled.
And then I guess another question that I'll be asking also is, when they converted it to multifamily under the old ordinance, was it illegal conversion?
I can't, I can't answer that. All I can answer is that in a C residential, multifamilies are permitted, the use is eight or more units in a neighborhood. I'm, I don't know if, I'm going to guess that they would be okay because it's eight or more units in the neighborhood within an acre, has to be an acre of property. So I would say that it probably met all of those requirements, but I'm not going to sit here and put my hand on the Bible, I just know that it was a multi-family dwelling prior to us rezoning it to be residential.
Well, if it was a C residential, why was it being utilized that way? Is there a reason why it was changed?
It will, I can tell you that, and so, you go back to the 2035 Comprehensive Plan, and it says that we're supposed to be eliminating eight a year, and how do you do that? I don't know. This wasn't the intent to eliminate it, it was when we went through it, we didn't check that property to see if it was Zone C residential. Most of the properties that we kept C residential, we knew were multifamily dwellings, and we kept them that way. We knew that there would probably be some out there that we would have missed, and we missed this one. There are probably some out there that are, that are multifamily, that are paying single family taxes, and when we come across those, we make them come in to get rezoned properly, but this is not the case on this one. This was Zone C residential, it was multifamily, and when we moved it to a B residential zoning.
This is the second one where they've had these.
Yeah.
We had one a couple of months ago.
That's right, we, this is the second one that we did, that's exactly right.
Okay, before we get to more discussion, let's go ahead and hear whoever would like to speak, let's do people who would like to either are petitioners or in favor of this request, because it looks like most of our list of attendees are, just come forward and state your name for the record, because I believe it is being taped or recorded.
My name is Mark Dreisbach, I live at 1108, or 1106 East Walnut, I also own 1108 East Walnut, which is behind this building. This building has been multiple apartments for years, and I'm not sure what the difference was between the B and C residential. They have two units in a concrete block building that's back on the intersection of the two alleys, the north-south and the east-west alley, and they had, I don't know how many units in the house, and there'd been multiple cars and stuff like that. My car's been hit driving past that cinder block building in the back there because there's no visibility at that intersection around the building. So, I mean, I know this has been probably grandfathered in because it was built before the layback requirements were changed, because I had to put in, I put in a garage at 1108 and had to move it back from the original position because it was right on the intersection of the alleys there, too, so.
Are you speaking in favor of the rezoning, or?
Well, I'm not sure what the zoning was changing for, I mean.
Well, it's part of a whole citywide zoning map of change.
Right.
Whole city was changed, and there's a lot, it kind of downzoned the entire city, a lot of places from multi down to single family, and we did agree that when there were valid mistakes made, and this, we got to determine this was a mistake, of what, it wasn't caught when we did the new zoning map, and so that's.
Right, well, I wasn't sure how many units they kept in the house once they remodeled the house, because I'd seen, watched the construction, the reconstruction of the building go on.
Very well, it's just been the last year or so then.
Right, it's been within the last year.
Before that, though, how many would you say were in there?
Uh, there was probably three apartments in the house itself, and then there were two in the back.
So there was five historically.
So there was five, five units, probably.
In recent history, then?
Yeah.
Okay. There aren't five units there.
So, I mean, I just wasn't sure because in, there's not a whole lot of parking around the place for all the extra cars.
Is there not parking, is there not parking? That's another question I was going to bring up.
Well, they get, they have like two spots in the back off the alley, and then somebody parks usually on the one alley next to the building, and then there's parking out on Clinton Street, so that's about where all the cars are.
So is there room on site for parking? That's probably more a question for Mr. Stock.
I'll try to address that, sir, when we get.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's only two in the back, and then one maybe half-block in the alley on the one side of the house.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak either for or against this rezoning? Did you have anything else to add, or?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. President, he brings up a great question, as in the new UDO would be required to have two off-street parking for every apartment, and being the fact that this was in place prior to the UDO, then they're required to have one off-street parking for every apartment, so, I mean, I don't know how you want to handle that. If you say one off-street parking because that's how it was when the, when the, everything was put in place, I would say that they're probably pretty close to being able to have five cars parked there. I think that, he's right, I think you can put two, maybe three cars off the alley, and then when you come, there's, it's, it's surrounded by alleys on the back and on the west side of the property, you probably can put two there in front of the garage that is now an accessory. If you were to say, hey, they got to come to the new UDO and require 10, they're not, they're not going to be able to do that.
Without a variance.
Without, without a variance, and I would be greatly surprised if the BZA would grant that. We had a house about two or three months ago that we tried to get that done, and we tried to actually put more on-street parking for the residents, and the BZA shot it down. So, if, if, if we get into making them go to the BZA for a variance for 10, that, that's not going to pass. So, if you keep it as one, as what is the original for this development, then I think that they can swing by that. I do want to talk about the garage that he's discussing, and that is, it would be, I don't like using grandfather, it'd be a non-conforming use is what it is because it doesn't meet the set, required setbacks, but as we all know, a non-conforming use can be sold as a non-conforming use as long as they don't make it bigger or smaller, or if 50% of it were to be damaged and had to be repaired, then you could potentially ask them to move the garage and have it set properly on the property. But none of those came into ply, compliance with this. Basically, they came in and refurbished the building, the inside, and made it into a pretty nice apartment, I've been in it, so. But the parking is questionable, depends on which way you want to run, run through as far as how you want to, how you want to do with that.
We're not even essentially looking at the UDO because it has no bearing on that, is correct?
It, it does not, it would have a bearing, a bearing with, with more of the BZA, but it's, it's a question that was brought up, and I wanted to give all the information that I can give.
Basically, they, they had three units in the house and two in the, in the garage under the old ordinance, right? And that's what they're having now?
The owners are here, let me.
There were two people living in both.
In, in the garage? There was in the garage?
It was, it's a white cinder block building, so.
Yeah. The, the owners are here, the Venechins are here, come on up and explain how, how everything is, is laid out for your property.
Okay, I'm going to be speaking for them because I don't speak English. So we bought the property last month, in April, the end of April, and it's two apartments in the back, the big cinder block building, like this, they said, and then three in the front, in the house. So, they would park on the side where the alley, two cars, if you parked them like this, two cars fit there, but if you only park like this, one fits, and then there's parking spots in the front, and then there's two in the back. And, sorry, I'm kind of nervous. And they, they were saying, my father-in-law, my mother-in-law, they were saying, how come this is all coming out right now when they just bought the property and not before? So, we have no idea what's going on.
Well, honestly, I think that it was a C mistakenly changed to a B, and my opinion is let's correct our mistake and change it back to the C. It's not their fault, they made investment, but it's not to punish them.
Yeah, I actually.
So why is it, why, why is it brought up now?
Because when, when the, the previous owner started to remodel it, it came to my attention that maybe this isn't zoned properly, so I came back to look, and it wasn't. So I tried to move this prior to it being sold, but I didn't get it done, and so the property got sold, and.
That's for her question, so.
Yeah.
So it's just.
They're, they're in this because they, they don't know. I tried to resolve it before they bought it, so everything would be fine, and I didn't get it accomplished.
I think it's just our mistake.
Yeah, so we just, we were just behind, it's nothing, nothing personal, we just, we just didn't, we just didn't get around to it, that's what, that's what I was trying to.
We've had several of these, so it's nothing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not because we don't like you guys or anything like that.
No, everybody makes mistakes, it's rather not your correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, but from my standpoint, let's make sure we're not getting more than what we had there under the old ordinance, and that's.
Sounds like, and it sounds like, it sounds like we're not.
We're not going to get them as they come up for sale.
Everything, everything is just going back to normal if you bring it back to a C residential district.
If I remember right, isn't there a room off the backyard, or off the back alley there for more parking if needed?
There, there is, there's a, there is a dumpster there, and it really needs to be fenced in, the dumpster needs to be enclosed. I tried to get the previous owner to do that, and obviously he didn't get it done. I've not spoken to these folks, new owners, about it at all. I was just more interested in getting it zoned and then having the conversation.
Sure.
The other inspections as a multi?
Why is there a dumpster?
It, it passed all the inspections, yep.
Just a question, this would not affect anything towards them? It's not going to affect them at all?
No.
It'll actually make them legal.
We haven't decided that yet.
I know what she plays her tongue back, because the back unit upstairs, I was, when I was in the Marine Corps, that was my residence, when I come home, I rented it years ago.
So we're just, we're just making it legal, the way it was prior to us coming in and rezoning it and making it illegal.
Okay.
Mars, he's only going to come up.
We're going to pass this, don't worry about that.
Okay.
Everything is going to be hopefully good after, in just a few minutes.
What's the staff recommendation on this?
We, we recommend that you rezone it back to C residential to correct the mistake that we made when we went through the UDO and redoing the city zoning map.
Which is similar to other cases we've already heard, right?
Exactly right, and it's probably not the last one either.
Probably not the last one, and it was kind of an agreement we made when the new map was done, we would correct valid mistakes, and.
That is right, that is right.
So is there any more comments in the audience, or if not, discussion from the board, or motion? And this would be a recommendation to the City Council, too.
The, the opposition to this, these other people had on this, on this parking thing, is there anything they can do to satisfy his, he's concerned about his getting around a corner or something here, I didn't, I don't understand that corner he's talking about.
So, the building sits right on the corner, so you have cross alleys, and this building sits right on the corner, so when you pull up, you cannot see anything to the left, you have to pull out into the crossroad to see if there's anything coming, because there's, you can't, the building's there, but it's a.
It's not set back.
It's not set properly, but there were no setbacks when that was built, and so that's why it's there. So as long as it's there, it's considered a non-conforming use, and non-conforming uses can be sold as long as they don't change or make it bigger or smaller, or if it doesn't get damaged somehow by 50%. If, if the three, if they were to add on to that, then we could say, hey, you can't, you got to move it to be setbacks properly then, but it's not, they just remodeled the inside and nothing was changed with the building, so it can, non-conforming be there until something happens to it, or they make it bigger or smaller.
So, so it's not the parking from the tenants that's causing this blind?
Well, it, the, the question that you, you ask is, is probably more of a BZA question, and that is, do you do what the new UDO requires, which is two parking per every apartment? So, they have five, that would be required, 10 off-street parking. You can't count parking on Clinton Street as a parking spot, that's, that's not intended, even though they're parking there anyway. They have to supply an off-street parking area. When the, when these apartments were put in place, the, the city ordinance, 67 ordinance required one, one parking space per apartment, and you, you heard her say that she can put two off of the alley that goes north and south, there's only two off the alley that goes east and west, but you probably can put a third there if, if, if necessary, and probably should be there, to have at least five of the cars that are parked there, but I don't know if that's a, I don't know if that's a concern for the Plan Commission in making their decision, I'll leave that up to the President. It would be if we were in front of the BZA, yes, then they would probably want to kick that around a little more.
And we cannot do conditional rezoning recommendations, so I mean, it's.
Yeah, I didn't think you could.
We would have to table it subject to BZA or send it up with a favorable or unfavorable certification to the City Council, that's would be our motion. But at the end of the day, all we're trying to do is correct it from a B zoning to C zoning, which.
Which, which always, that's right.
Parking really doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
Because even if you don't rezone it, it could continue as it is, correct? That be my understanding?
Well, yeah, it would be, it would be considered non-conforming use, but it would be a non-conforming use because of what we did, not because of what the owners had did. And so we're, we're trying to correct that, so it's not our, if, we didn't give them a challenge they got to deal with, because if you don't do anything, and weather comes in, and 50% of that gets torn down, they can't put it back without going to the BZA for a special exception. So, now, now we've caused, now the city has caused maybe damage for them to be able to, to continue on what is they're doing.
I realize that alley's tight, but it's not the only one in town that's that tight, and we just deal with them. I hate to say that, thanks.
Any work, discussion or questions for anybody?
Yeah, but if we catch it before it's sold, then you won't have this problem, right?
Yeah, we, if I could have got it, it didn't, it just didn't dawn on me until we were moving along, the for sale sign was still there, and then when I started the process, the for sale sign was gone, I went, oh.
But I guess, why, why aren't we treating this as if it's not sold? I mean, we would, we would do the same thing if it wasn't sold.
You are, you are doing that, I'm just saying, for their benefit, when they, they thought that maybe we were doing something that was not helping them out, then I'm saying, oh no, we're just doing the opposite, we're, we're making this all, all proper.
I'd make a motion to change it back to residential C.
You, did you make a motion?
Yes.
I'll second it. Here we have had a motion and a second, and probably the minutes should reflect to favorably certify the rezoning request to City Council, and so, roll call, vote, please.
Mike Nichols.
Aye.
Larry Moser.
Aye.
Robert Joe Stevens.
Aye.
Joseph Bookwalter.
Aye.
Mark Mills.
Aye.
I thank you, and I'm sure the new owners thank you also.
And this will go to City Council on what day?
It'll be this coming, no, it'll be the next City Council meeting, which would be June. That would be June the 9th, and it only has to go one vote, so.
So if anybody wants to come and speak to City Council about this, they will also have a meeting on that, and on June 9th, is that?
On June the 9th, 7 o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
It might be good for the owners to be there that night as well. And this, and Mr. Stock will present it at that time, and with the favorable recommendation.
Yep.
So it was approved here, but the final approval comes there. Okay, so, people are welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting, or if you're only here for that, you're free to go, but, but the next item is docket CPC 2025 day 03, Cynthia Galvez, 1401 South First Street, the rezone from B residential to C residential.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President, I, I have to tell you that I actually gave you a staff report on this, I've, I've never done one of these before, as in actually trying to change a, a unit without being a mistake, so I went this route, and I tried to give you information, tried to give you a location of this, and then what the requests are from the UDO. So, we'll get rolling. The applicant is Cynthia Galvez, she is here this evening on behalf of Trace, the Estellas duplex, and at 1401 South First Street. The initial rezoning of 1401 South First Street from B residential to C residential is the request for multifamily living. Zoning this property and the most of the surrounding properties are Zone B residential. Now, I, I will stop right there and say that duplexes can be allowed in a B residential district by special exception. The site characteristics is that this request is located at lot number 82 in Oak Park, in addition to the City of Frankfurt, Indiana, as the same is recorded in record, or plot record two on old page 40. The request analysis is that out of the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 201 I, the amendments in accordance with the IC 3674-602 Indiana Code, has currently amended, the City, the Frankfurt City Council may amend or partially repeal the text of this ordinance, or they may amend the zoning maps of this ordinance as follows. A, the City of, the Frankfurt City Council or the City Plan Commission may initiate a proposal to amend or partially repeal the text according to the procedures of Indiana Code 3674-602B and Indiana Code 3674-607 as currently amended, and according to the commission rules. B, the Frankfurt City Council, City Plan Commission, or at least 50% of the affected property owners may initiate a petition to change the zoning maps according to the procedures of Indiana Code 3674-602C and Indiana Code 374, 3674-608 as currently amended, and according to the commission rules. The rezoning criteria is that there are five criterias which the City Plan Commission and the Frankfurt City Council should pay reasonable regard to in the evaluation of a rezoning request as specified in Section 20101C of the Unified Development Ordinance. The petition is evaluated in accordance with the below criteria. Now I'm going to stop there, and I, and I want to say this, when I, when I sat down to do this, I, I actually came here with the intentions of trying to shoot this down, and the reason for that is, most of these homes in this neighborhood are, are single-family dwellings, except for one, and it may be an illegal multifamily complex on the backside of this, but a lot of things have changed since that time, because next month, you're going to have Tony Del Rio coming in, and a block away from this property, he's going to talk to you about rezoning from Ag to C residential. Why? Well, because he wants to put part of his subdivision in as duplexes, and I think the proper way of doing it is to get it rezoned, because by rezoning it, he can have more than eight units per acre, and, and it's that, that property that he's going to put it in is a little over an acre in, in, in living facilities. So, to me, it, it didn't make any sense for me to be sitting here saying, hey, we need to look at Tony Del Rio, but here's a property that we need to disregard. We're going to give you a lot of facts and figures that say that what they want to do can actually be completed and be put in properly by the Unified Development Ordinance, but before we go there, we'll talk about what the criteria is. So the first one is the most commonly adopted Comprehensive Plan. So, you know, I wrote in that this rezone from B residential to C residential is referenced generally on page 18, Community Living of the 2035 Comprehensive Plan Under Housing. Limit future multifamily uses and eliminate existing illegal conversions. This can be accomplished through downzoning most of the city residential areas for primarily single-family use and stopping future conversions. Any two-family or multifamily structures shall obtain approval from either the Plan Commission through rezoning, or the Board of Zoning Appeals by special exception. Eight illegal conversions shall be eliminated each year from 2016. Eight illegal conversions shall be eliminated each year from two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and twenty-one, where none of that occurred. Two, the current conditions and character of structure and use in each district. The parcel located at fourteen-oh-one South First Street is an empty lot. The only multifamily home is located at thirteen-fifty-two South Columbia Street. Don't know if it's illegal there or not. Located on the northeast corner of this lot, all the residential, all the residences, all the other residents are single-family dwellings. Three, the most desirable use for which the land in each district is adapted. This property was B residential before the new zoning map. The twenty-thirty-five Comprehensive Plan talks about downzoning for primarily single-family uses. The city just completed a housing study which calls for all housing from multifamily to single-family to affordable housing. Four, the con, conservation of property values throughout the jurisdiction. As mentioned above, all properties are single-family but one. And then five, responsible development and growth. As mentioned, the city just completed a housing study calling for all different housing groups, multifamily, single-family, large apartments, and affordable housing. So as I say, um, a lot has changed between the time I wrote this up, and this has been a while ago, um, to today. And, um, so the lot, the square footages of the lot per beacon is eight thousand three hundred and eighty-two square feet. And they have to have four off-street parking, um, on this lot, which I estimate to be an additional seven-hundred square feet. Now then, if they build a thirty-by-forty-seven duplex of a thousand four hundred and seventy-eight, and I think you actually have all the information about that, that totaled with seven-hundred square feet still stays far below the exceeded, um, um...
Impervious.
Impervious surface ratio of four thousand one hundred and ninety-one or fifty percent. So to be able to put a duplex on this property is possible to do, and meet all the requirements of the Unified Development Ordinance, um, with the one exception, if I went to the Uni, to the BZA, it would not pass the B residential density requirement, which is six, six units per acre. By moving it to C residential, now you go to eight or more, and that now covers being able to put this duplex on this empty lot. And so that's one of the reasons why we came for you this evening, is to, to, to rezone it to a C residential, so we don't get into, um, the fact that there's a, a, a density of only six for Bs and going before the BZA. I can promise you, and I'm telling you the truth.
Where's the, where's?
It would not pass.
Where is the, uh, I, I know what you're talking about, Dan, because I was on the BZA, you know?
If you want to see the...
So where, I, where's the, this is, this has got four, so where's the other two? You know, you said it would, it could go up to six per acre? Isn't it six?
This is, this is, on a B residential, six living units. Six living units per acre, per acre on a B residential.
Right.
If you go to C residential, it's eight or more.
Okay, why does this exceed six?
Because when you take an acre of property around and you throw in that three-apartment complex on the backside of this, they're going to put two more, now you're at five, and we hadn't even counted the single-family dwellings there. So it's going to be way over six, and the BZA will not accept, won't, won't accept that.
That's kind of under common ownership, though, and that's not the case.
Um, the, the, the BZA looks at, well, and I actually talked to Liz about this, to make sure that I was wrong, because I was thinking a unit was a house, one house, no, I don't care how many homes were in it. And Liz says, nope, it's living facilities. So if you have a, a house that has two apartments in it, that's two units. And so you can take, being the fact that you're in town, you can take an acre all different kinds of ways. And no matter which way you take it, you're still going to have more than six in a, in a, in an acre of property if it stays B residential.
Because otherwise, it's interpreted to be the property under ownership and control of the lot owner, not overall all the others.
And, and that's, that's, that's how I figured it. And so my, my concern wasn't, when, when I come to duplexes, and I will use Gracie Balderos' here on Green Street, it's being built, is my main concern when a duplex gets brought in is that they have to meet the off-street parking. Or I am not going to be the guy who throws in more cars on, on a street because somebody wants to put an apartment in the middle of, of a residential district, so I'm not going to be that guy. So they've got to meet the off-street parking. That's more important for me than anything else, um, when you do a duplex. But it isn't with the, with the BZA. The, the BZA now looks at, looks at the whole gamut, they look at the whole picture, which is probably the proper thing to do. And I, I, I don't get upset with the BZA for doing what they do, um, that's why they get paid the big dollars, and, which is zero, right, guys? But it's still the big dollars.
We have petitioners who want to speak on this?
The owners are here.
Can we let them speak?
My question...
Couple of questions in, but it kind of relates to this, so...
My only question would be, is that area prone to flooding or not?
It's not, no.
Maybe bad drainage, but not flooding.
Right.
There is no, there is no floodplain in that area.
Okay, no drainage problem or anything?
Well, I'm not going to say drainage problem.
Maybe drainage, there's a difference between bad drainage, which is man-made versus natural floodplain. And my understanding is there's no floodplain.
This is just two, yeah.
There's a apartment building behind it.
I recently, okay, so backstory, this used to be a mom's, I bought it off of her, she wasn't doing anything with the property, so that's why, um, so I had been paying her for a while now, but recently it had been my name maybe less than a year, last year.
And nothing's been on it?
Nope, not yet.
Okay.
But we're ready to move on, um, with the, you know, hopefully within, have a duplex there, but, so the, I just wanted to mention those, so, um, so we are requesting like every, like what we're here for, to change the B to a commercial property. My intention is to build a well-designed duplex residential structure, for which I enlisted, um, an architect layout for you guys as well. It should be coded and should have quality standards. So, and the zoning should align with all the goals of the county's comprehensive plan by promoting thoughtful infill development, develop and addressing the local need for quality housing. The property is currently underutilized, um, but with your approval, we would contribute positively to the surrounding area in both aesthetics and values, and hopefully minimize any disruption to the neighborhood as well.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak, just for the record on this?
Um, I just have some questions, I guess, to her.
Please come up and state your name and just ask whatever questions, and she can answer what she wants.
In the mama's voice. So, um, I'm talking on behalf of my parents, which, oh, sorry, I'm Virginia Edgeman, um, the daughter of the owners of fourteen-hundred South Columbia Street.
Which you put behind.
Yes, behind the first street, behind them, so, so I guess they're wondering, um, so they're planning to, I guess, are you planning to buy a bunch of property off, and? No, this property was, um, so I bought it off my mother. I used to live in this property years ago, I grew up here in Frankford. I live in Indianapolis Town. But my, um, we do have background, um, um, we, we are, my husband owns the construction, he's a licensed contractor, and he would be the one, um, assigned to do this, to do this as well. But this is just an investment. Investment, okay, so, um, like, I agree with you, like the parking issue. You, your name's Dawn, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, I'm gonna, I'm against, we're against it, because it just, I don't want to build a bunch of duplexes or rentals in our neighborhood and just cause a bunch of issues, or just like the parking issues, I was, I already have parking issues, and I don't want to be so crowded.
According to this, the off-street parking?
No, because they have a... Let me sit down, so I, I know we're on, I want to be, have people on TV be able to hear. So, um, when they build this, this duplex, they're entitled to build it to the same frontage as all the rest of the homes on each side and within three hundred feet. So if each home on each side is ten foot off of the property line, they're entitled to do the same with this building. If they do that, then off of the alley, they have plenty of room for four off-street parking, so that'd be two per apartment. And, and then that would still meet the impervious surface ratio of less than fifty percent. So, um, all their requirements that the UDO requires, they can meet. Now then, you know, you're going to ask me, well, what about on-street parking? I, I can't tell you they're not going to park on the street, I can't. But I would think that if they come home in the evening and the street's full, that they would use their parking place, but I, I'm not going to sit here and promise you that.
Any additional questions?
Um, listen to this. Oh, que va afectar ahí en nuestra casa ahí, por qué nos mandaron este carta?
If you could translate the question for us, too, yeah.
Well, he can give me my translation. I'm a little bit translating.
Okay, she wants to know how is this going to affect her, yes, home, per se?
It would be up to you to answer that, then.
Yeah, so lo, lo, lo que pasa es que cada, cada casa va a tener un parqueadero específico para los carros, para tratar de no que se pique la gente en la calle, ¿no? Obviamente es imposible de que la gente trate de que no se pique en la calle, no se puede hacer nada. Como cualquier persona se puede pique en la calle, por lo tanto, vamos a tener un parqueadero necesario para los vehículos y pique de cada lado de la casa.
And if you could translate for us, too, please, if you can.
So what we're trying to do is just build that duplex home for her, not to be worried about the parking lot as well, because we're trying to do a two parking, uh, for two vehicles on each side of the home, per se. And I guess her main concern is if there's going to be people parking her home or blow fire near her property, which I'm trying to explain to her, that it's not, because it's going to have, uh, I guess, a space for them to park there.
Wouldn't they need four on-street parkers?
Four, yeah.
Four.
Two for each apartment.
Yeah.
And that will be...
That'll be plenty of...
It's still...
That'll be plenty of...
Okay.
That'll be coming out, that'll be coming out the alley.
What helps them out is that they can move that house close to the street, because the rest of the homes are close to the street.
Yeah.
So that'll help them out to be able to fill that.
Yeah, the average setback, yeah.
That's right.
And you'll be keeping an eye on that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Is, is that an alley that runs behind First Street, so they would come in the alley and pull into the back of their home?
That's the idea of having the home in the middle and the parking lot in the center.
And you said the apartment, there's a, right behind this on the other street, there's an apartment building?
On Columbia Street.
Yeah.
To the beach or the north.
So I'd be more worried about that than I would be this duplex.
I think it's a three-residential. Actually, one of my sister-in-law's sister lives there, I just, I didn't know that, and I, I thought it was a duplex, and she said it's a three, three-family home.
Three families.
I'd be more worried about that than I would this duplex being built.
Yeah.
Ahí en dirección, bueno, el lote, el lote que está bien, donde está necesario. She's asking just where we were going to have the, the house.
Can you please translate that for us?
So basically, the idea is, like, she wants to know how is this going to be set, kind of thing, so the main idea is for us to be honest, we live in Indy and her mom lives here, we come here sometimes to spend a weekend here, we don't really want to spend the weekend at her mom's home. We also want to use part of the duplex as for us as family also, right?
Okay.
But then the other, maybe, I don't know what she's spending a weekend during the hour, maybe, uh, depending on the person, somebody else.
So, are you guys just using the property, like the fourteen-oh-one? Oh, yeah, just that, that's the only... Oh, just one, okay, I was just computing, I'm like, oh, yes, fine, okay, okay. It makes sense now. I think, yeah.
Does that change your, you?
Oh, that changes my opinion on that, so I'm okay with it, if they want to just change that one behind us.
You don't want the whole neighborhood, you don't want the whole neighborhood, you don't want the whole neighborhood changing.
Right. That's what I was worried about, that maybe they were trying to get a bunch of duplexes on there.
Got you.
I do like the idea, though, we are getting more housing in it in Frankfurt.
That's our number one issue, yeah.
Yeah, we need...
This is a nice looking, this is a nice looking proposal.
I think they're going to do something to raise their property value.
And honestly, uh, that, honestly, we live in Indy, you know, and she mentioned to me, like, hey, let's see what we can do over there, and I'm like, oh, let's see what we can do there. I feel like it's a small town, versus Indy, since we live in Indy, we see all the fancy crimes, all that crazy stuff, we have all the properties there, but we're like, uh, we don't want to build there, we don't want to, I feel like a small town, and she, she grew here, and she's from here, she feels more safe here, even to invest, per se, as long as...
Sure.
Feel free to drive around our city, we got a lot more empty lots to get.
Tell us more about it, please.
Well, maybe if they get this one up, they might consider that.
But ideally, contractor here, he's on there somewhere. Ideally, in single-family neighborhoods, though, you should fill up single-family new homes, not duplexes, and so that's probably going to affect, you know, my, my vote, but, because you'll notice around town, in single-family neighborhoods, there are infill, single-family homes going up in single-family neighborhoods, and this is different from the last case, is the fact that one already had, basically, grandfathered in. This case is an empty lot in a single-family neighborhood, surrounded by single-family structures. The one multi may or may not even be legal, you know, may have been, you know, done, you know, because there for a while Frankfurt did not really enforce that, as we have been in recent years, and so also on rezonings that goes with the land. The question is not should this be built, but is this a great spot for multifamily housing? And from, from that standpoint, I'm probably going to be inclined to say no, and so, because it would take BZA approval to, to lock him into this specific house, and so that'd be, you know, that's kind of my thought process, be probably to deny the rezoning, but go to the BZA to build this specific unit, which is the only way to, 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 to tie him into this, because otherwise that, the eight structures, if there's room for it, could hypothetically go on this lot, you know, and so, because that's what the B, the C residential allows, and so, um...
I guess, I, I don't know, why, why is the city so bent on eliminating multifamily housing when we're, I mean, it's led to us needing a lot of housing?
Well, let me give you the history, because as with Mr. Nichols, we, we've been here for a while, and that is, um, back in this, I'd say, late sixties, early seventies, um, guys were coming in, people were coming in and buying these, uh, single-family big houses and converting them into apartments. And, um, the people who put together the twenty-thirty-five Comprehensive Plan or the one prior to that said, we're done with that, we're not going, we don't want that to happen anymore, so we're going to, we're going to start stopping the conversion of these beautiful homes into, into multifamily dwellings. That's why that was put in place. Um, and, um, by us taking the Unified Development Ordinance and making them all be residentials, now then, it makes this kind of action come before either the BZA and have the neighborhood say, hey, we're okay with that, or come to the Plan Commission for a rezone. And, uh, and I think that's all proper. And, and I, and I agree with you, Mr. President, and that is, when I first started going through this, I'm like, man, it's all single-family dwellings, and I, I'm not, I'm not up to putting an apartment in the middle of a single-family dwelling. But then, as well as you know this too, and that is, there are now mixed uses going on, where you've got single-family dwellings going in with duplexes, going with multifamily dwellings, all in, in the same areas in a mixed use, along with now retail and everything else that goes with it. And so I'm not promoting retail in this district, not at all, but, um, I, I do see the, the difficulty in making the decision, saying, hey, you know what, we don't want you to do this, but we're going to look at Tony Del Real's development that is agriculture, and the surrounding property of this is all agriculture, and so that means more housing is probably going to get developed as people... And so that means more housing is probably gonna get developed as people pass away and the, and the ground starts coming up for sale. So there's probably gonna be a lot more housing down there. It's gonna be a challenge because there is some, some water issues down there. Tony Del Real has to put in a, a retention pond for all of his, his building. And so, um, with Tony's development that just, it just came up not more than maybe three weeks ago, that, um, it's coming before you in June. We, that's what the special meeting is for. Because if it passes, they're on a timeframe for grant money to develop their, their duplex area. So, um, uh, so that's coming to you in, in, in June. So it changed my mind a lot and, and, and I'm not a guy who likes to put duplexes or rental property in res, in residential districts, but you're, you're, it's, ten of them are gonna come before you in about a month, so.
And there, there, you can hit a driver from.
You can, you can throw a rock, you can probably throw a rock to it, to where it's gonna be.
At the south end of the street.
Yeah, very south end, it's right, right.
They had one on Cattleton not very long ago.
That's right, we, we did that. So.
These guys here are gonna be coming in on the weekends and living in one side of this unit. So if there's any troublemakers in the other unit, they'll.
Well, if, if it, I'll tell you, the thing that we've had in the last probably six or seven days are, um, Airbnbs. Um, a lot of people are now putting in Airbnbs. And so I didn't think I had anything to deal with it. Um, and then I, I started reading through and I thought, well, maybe I do. Went and talked to Liz about it and Liz says, Don, a lot of landlords now are going to weekly rentals. And so that's what an Airbnb is, a single-family weekly. And so what do you, are you gonna bring all those folks in? Because they'd all be classified as, well, I don't think they classify themselves as, as, um, um, oh, I can't think of the terminology right now, uh, vacation homes. Um, I think that that's pretty well self-explained when you get into the definition. Um, but, um, we've decided not to bring them before the B Z A for their special exception as what a vacation home would be required to do. Because if you're, if I'm gonna do that, then I'm, I'm gonna have to go to all these single, all these apartments that are paying by the week. And why are they paying by the week? Well, it's easy to be evicted if you pay by the week. Then if you're paying by the month, you can get them out quicker. And so, you know, everything starts, everything starts to change. And so you, you look at those things and go, hey, do you, do we need to make changes, more changes in U D O as we progress?
Many cities are actually, and, and someone who has for almost a decade now gone almost all Airbnb and verbals, hasn't been in a motel in almost a decade, you know, it's kinda the coming trend. It's probably in Frankfurt right now, but it's usually daily. I mean, you know, daily rates and.
Well, my major.
But it does kinda take away from the affordable housing. And so that's the argument where, you know, the bigger the city, the more tougher they're gonna be on Airbnbs and so.
They're eliminating it altogether.
So they're eliminating it altogether, which guys like myself who, you know, are training them to party houses, which was a big thing over the weekend, you know.
And that was my concern with Airbnb, Airbnbs. That's why I wanted to bring them before the, the B Z A as a special exception so that the neighbors can come in and say, yeah, we're okay with it or no, we're not okay with it. Um, but I, I, I think that Liz, um, so what are we doing? So what we're doing is, I haven't started this project yet, but we're looking at a policy that says that if somebody calls our office, both the plan, area plan and the city plans office, we now will say, this is how we're dealing with Airbnbs. So that we're both dealing with them in the same manner and unifying how the process is. Um, so, um, that's, that's what we're looking at.
What business is it of the cities that what somebody does with their house? And whether they rent it out a night, each night or each week or by the month?
We, I, I totally agree with you, but what about my office? And I'm sorry, we're way off of your mark here. What, what about I come to the office on Monday and get a call from somebody who goes, my God, Don, they had a party all weekend. They rented a house out, they had fifty people in this house all weekend and something's gotta be done.
Call police.
And so.
Call police.
That, that, that is why, but still, we don't want that to happen again. So, you know, you, you, I try to think quicker, try to think down the line. And that's, that's saying a lot for me at seventy years old.
It'd be more of a civil matter, wouldn't it?
But, but I don't have, I, I don't think that I have anything that would require them to come before the B Z A that I thought I had, so we're not, we're not, we're not enforcing it.
Yeah, we don't have the language in our organs, should we? Maybe.
I'm sorry, I'm way off base. I know you guys wanna vote and it's six-thirty and the Cubs play at eight o'clock.
I will say that this right here that you brought to us, to me was very professional, the way you guys done it, that looked good.
And honestly, we had to spend the time and honestly, I would say financials to get all these places.
Just up to code and, you know, have their road, have their green area, have somebody feed off the side of the neighbors. I'm parking, it's, um, it's all in there where we're combining by all the codes.
Very professional.
It'll be more selfish for you guys.
I don't have.
I make a motion to pass this duplex.
They're not building six units, they're not building eight units, taken off, they're building two units in a town that absolutely has to have house. And Tony's about, if we turn them down and they come in here on the seventeen and watch Tony come up here and give them the same pitch and we pass that, I, for their sake, I'd be like.
It's not fair. That's why I make my motion, go ahead and accept this duplex here on First Street.
The rezone, you're, you're doing a rezone.
The C.
If everybody's certified.
The C. The C.
I'll second it, absolutely. I, I absolutely think you guys, we need it. We got responsible people here that wanna bring money to our community, wanna bring housing to our community and to test, well, are they gonna sell the lot and it's gonna sit there for another ten or fifteen or twenty years? If it was a fourplex or a sixplex, I'd probably be like.
No.
I'm out, but it's a twoplex. You know, it's, it's one structure with two families. I don't have a problem with that at all.
Keep this, right, yeah, thanks.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, roll call please.
Mike Nichols.
Aye.
Larry Moser.
Aye.
Robert Joe Stevens.
Aye.
Joseph Bookwalter.
Aye.
Mike Mills.
I'm gonna have to vote no, but if I was on the B Z A, I would make the motion to approve it as a special exception, locking it in this. So it does pass four to one, go into the city council with a favorable recommendation. Or sticking with this principle of the ordinance.
I hope you guys can get it done. I hope you can.
So we, we have one more stop, we have to go to the city council on June the seventh.
Nice. Ninth.
June ninth and they meet at seven o'clock, yeah, they meet at seven o'clock. Um, it's just a, a one vote, they'll up or down it, they have three options. They can accept it, they can deny it, or they can send it back to the plan commission for further study. So, um, I can tell you that I've had, what, two or three of these? And if the plan commission passes, it usually goes through. But I'm not on the plan, I'm not on the city council and I can't promise you that. So we'll go to the meeting and see what happens.
I have a feeling I know one vote they'll probably get.
Good luck with everything, thanks for wanting to invest and.
Thank you.
Infill is good.
Yeah.
Very nice.
Take the same thing to the city council.
Yes. I do. I'm sorry to keep you this long, but there's a lot, you, you have a lot coming for you in the next. Oh, we're ready to start making amendments in the U D O? And, and that's coming very, very soon.
Have a safe trip back to Indy.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to have a special meeting so we're not throwing air, everything here on one day and be here till the late hours of the night. So I'm trying to get Tony kicked in and kicked out. But, um, here's something that has just popped up and it's not coming before you, but I want you to be aware of what's going on. The old Goodwill store is getting ready to have a new front put on it. They're gonna take all the front off of it, it's now, it's in really bad shape, all the metal on the building, all of that's gonna be removed. And they're gonna be putting a new facade on, on the building. It's gonna look really nice. It's gonna look like something that you would see if you were to go over to Carmel and to a shopping mall. It's, it's gonna have, it's, it's gonna be very, very nice. I'm not bringing it before you because I, I don't think it's big enough for you to be wrapping this thing up or delaying there a possibility of getting it done. This is the old Goodwill store. So they're redoing the front, it's gonna be really, really nice. I think it'll make it attractive and I'm hoping that it'll attract somebody to go in there, cause it'll be really good. So the other thing that we have going on, and this will be coming before you, um, when it gets further down the line. And that is Walmart is going to be, it could be possibly expanding, um, to the west, um, about two to eight thousand square feet. Um, and what they wanna, what they wanna be able to do is, um, their carryout food service. They don't like their people going out into the weather. So I'm guessing they're gonna build something that you're gonna pull into, get your groceries in the car and pull out of. And, and so there's, they have a lot, I sent all the information. They have to, they have to carry the twenty-eight East overlay district design and they have to do the developmental designs that are required in the U D O. So they gotta put together, this is real early, but if it, if it continues to move forward, this will be coming to you, um, as a developmental, uh, program.
Don, you say to the west, there's a big drainage pond there, right?
I know that, they gotta squeeze it in there. I, I told them, I don't think you can take that bad boy out nor can you build over the top of it, so. And they don't have room to move it.
And would that go to the drainage board?
It will, they'll, there, there's a lot, before it comes here, there's a lot. They, they gotta get drainage and they know all that. I, I sent them all that information. But I just, I always want you to be aware of things that are in the pipeline or that could be coming. There's, there's a, I'm telling you, boys, there's, there's a lot of discussions that are going on.
Aren't they putting a, a store within the store of Walmart?
They're putting a, a, a medical clinic.
Yeah.
And that's, that's, I think that's in and going. Well, it's not going yet, it's supposed to be July, is it?
Fifteenth.
Yeah. So, um, so that's coming. Um, so we have Del Real in June, we're gonna have U D O's amendments possibly at the end of June.
About Core.
And, and what's that?
Core, the Core Building.
The Core Building. So the Core Building is, we had a long discussion about that last night at a, at a planning meeting. And, um, there is a, there is a group that is looking for the possibility of putting in a, um, retirement village on the property and then tying that, tie, tying in the Core Building into the retirement village so that they would have a place to go for exercises and do all their things. And then also then reopen it up to the public for their use. So that's now being kicked around, it's not, not finalized.
It would take a rezone.
That would be a rezone because, yes, it would be. So that would be coming here before you. But there's, it's so far down the line that, um, they're still, the, the people that are looking at it, it will be getting grant dollars to do this because it, it ties in with a, a retirement village. And, uh, so they would be able to get that done by, by some grant dollars. So that's being, that's being looked after. U D O, Tony, and, and, and so I, I'm, I'm, I know I'm, I'm missing some things.
Not ready for plan update?
That, that is dead. The comprehensive plan update is dead, it's not coming before you at all.
We tabled at the last meeting.
Yeah, should that be taken off table and just, I don't know what you wanna do with it, it's not coming back. They're looking now at putting a new one together, so.
I make the motion to do that.
So that's, that's what.
I encourage that, instead of fixing the old.
That's, and that's what they're gonna do, that's what they're looking to do.
Hopefully in conjunction with the county.
That's what they're gonna do, does it, does, can it stay on the table or do you need to take it off? How do you wanna handle that?
Till tonight.
Thanks, Larry, for bringing that up.
Probably should take a motion to.
It's actually tabled for April, but we didn't have a meeting.
Well, I believe that what they're trying to do is try to get a grant to pay for most of that to redo.
Yeah.
So we should probably turn it down then and just officially say.
Yeah, could you, you can.
Oh, it's Alicia, I think we should probably.
You want me to find that out and bring it up at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause we should, yeah, just not keep it indefinitely or make a motion to, yeah, let's go ahead with a whole new plan and find the money to do it and which would give further credibility to the folks seeking a grant to, to be able to do that.
I'll, I'll talk to Alicia and get it all taken care of and have her write things up. But that's it, there's, there's a lot, there's, there's, there's a lot. And, um, sometimes it's hard to keep up with it all. Um, but we're in a growth period, boys and girls, it's, we're, we're gonna get bigger whether you want to or not, but we wanna be able to control the growth. A lot of the homes that are being purchased are being purchased by people who work at Eli Lilly. Um, that's always a good thing also, that's why we are doing what we're doing. So we feel like that's working. Um, when you look at the Riley addition, they're down to just six lots left. Um, they're getting ready to put up six more homes and I think some of them are already pre-sold. And, um, and on the Meadowbrook subdivision, you now have three homes sold, so, um, a fourth pending. So, um, that's, that's going, that's going pretty well also, so.
Don, on Riley addition, and, and I'm sure you live out there, you see it every day. When you turn off of twenty-eight on the Williams, go south. You come to stop sign, which that's McKinley and there's, there's something there. The farther that Riley addition gets to Williams Road, the traffic's picking up now on that entrance and exit of the, on the west side of the Riley addition, coming out on Williams. Well, you've got people parking on the far right lane of Williams. There's no, no parking signs there, so I guess they're allowed to do that.
They are.
Now, when those people are coming out of there, you got people coming this way on Williams, you got people going that way on Williams and you got people trying to get out of that addition. So they're gonna probably wind up putting no parking signs on, on the west side of Williams.
That'll need to be a police study and we can bring it before Chief Shoemaker to have him do that.
It's a, it's kinda, I noticed the other day, I, I was going south and somebody was coming out and there was cars parked there. And so Williams now, you can just go this way all the time. Well, with some cars parked over here and people coming in and out, you can't do that. It was, it was a jam right in there.
Yeah, it would have to be a, a driving survey for the chief.
Is there an alley behind those houses?
There is. It's not completed yet, they still have another half inch of asphalt. They still have another half inch of asphalt that, that needs to go on there. And then both ends aren't completed. They, I think they think that they're gonna get by by driving over that sidewalk and not making an entry and they're, they're not going to be that, they're, they're gonna be putting that entryway in. But the one on Coulter Street is not completed, the sidewalks aren't there. They still have another half inch of asphalt to put on and then they're gonna complete everything.
But the only, the only, all the garages come off the side, off the alley.
Yeah.
Yeah. And you can't, and you can't park in front of any of those houses because there's no parking.
How are they gonna get the sidewalk up the hill and the ADA?
That's a great question, but it, we'll be monitoring that.
Now they let them put shit.
So, you know, what, what happens is, is that the slope can't be more than five percent. So depending on the, the lower height to the higher height, let's say it's nine feet, then this thing has to be, it's an inch of foot. So they're, they're, they're gonna have to either start way back and, and, and arch it up or they're gonna have to put in some type of, of a platform that would be six foot by six foot to get to circle up and then head up to the next one.
Are they gonna tear out the old sidewalk there?
Yep, yeah, they'll, they'll, they'll have to do that to, even though every.
Do that.
Everything that's being put in now is in line with that sidewalk. Um, but they're gonna have to meet ADA requirements when that, when those sidewalks get put in.
They did not take out the old sidewalk on the first houses built there on Wallbag.
They, they didn't and, and they still have two places that they have to go back and fill in. And, um, you know, I, this is, this is my first subdivision and I, I didn't do a very good job with it because South Street should have had curbs put on it. And then the sidewalk should have been all redone on Wallbag Street. And, um, um, and then there are little odds and ends things that, that got overlooked also. And, and what you're talking about right now is one of them, but we're monitoring. The other thing that, that I'm trying to get figured out is that if you look at the old Riley parking or Riley lot on the Wallbag Street, there is a, a concrete, um, uh, you know, a wall and it's starting to fall and it really needs to be replaced. And the homeowners aren't gonna replace it. And I don't imagine that the subdividers or the, or Majestic will wanna do that either for the cost, but that, that needs to be looked after also before they get out of there, so. And they're just now starting to build up there, so. I've not had the conversation with Bob from Majestic. It probably won't be a fun conversation to have, but we'll see how we go.
Can't you just tell him that you're gonna hold, freeze all those permits till he does change that wall?
Um, yeah, I, I don't know what all my leverages are, but you know, um, Majestic and I, we've had a lot of challenges with, with, with building and, and, uh, we're, we're resolving, the city is resolving an issue on Meadowbrook. We put the sidewalks in the wrong place. And, and that was by my call because where we thought they were supposed to go, everything was in the middle of them, including hydrants. So we moved them down closer and then F and K and VS, the engineering go, man, you can't do that. We gotta sign off. So we're actually getting ready to tear out all the sidewalks that are on the west side of Hoag Street and put them where they belong, which is ten foot off the curb to fourteen foot off the curb, which puts them up about a fourth way up into the people's front yard. But that's where the easement is. And so we're getting ready to get that all taken care of and straightened out. So, um, that's, that's costing me a couple pennies and so.
That's gonna make you real pocket.
But I'm, they're okay because I'm paying for, or the city's paying for it. So.
Which means we're paying for it.
Yeah. Means we're all paying, we're all paying for it. So that's all I have, Mr. President. I'm sorry to be.
More, more things for the.
I'm legally adjourned.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. So, so this next special, the next meeting we have.
Special meeting.
Special meeting.
On the seventeenth.
The date, yeah, okay. That's, uh, that's, uh, that's where Tony Del Real's coming with his.
Yeah. He has two, he has two properties that he's coming. One is the subdivision. The other one is a triangular property that's still big enough to put a duplex on, on the end of Second Street.
Snow suit next time for at least a major winter coat.
Yeah, Chris and Isaac.